This is City of Avondale, six Georgia Board of Mayor Commissioners, work session. It's February twenty nine, twenty twenty three, eight, six, fourteen. According to meeting's order, we have an agenda for still have a motion to adopt. S D, do I have a second? That was Lionel, all of them say aye.
Aye.
Uh. Okay. So. First item of business, a resolution by the City of Avondale State to rec- wait a minute, that's the one.
Yep.
I'll add. I'll just read the title, just for the record, a resolution by the, we're not voting on this, a resolution by the Board of Mayor Commissioners of the City of Avondale State is creating a special tax, special district to fund infrastructure improvements within the city's downtown business district to establish the boundaries of such special district. And to provide for the levy collection of taxes within said district, Mr. Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so our city attorney, Mr. Quinn, has prepared a resolution that would be necessary for the creation of a special service district if you so choose. If y'all recall from our previous discussion, uh, in order for that, uh, a, um, a millage to be levied in that district in the twenty twenty four tax year, the district boundaries themselves have to be created by a resolution during the twenty twenty three calendar year. Uh, the levy, it's if you choose to create a district, uh, the levy does not have to be, uh, generated or, or decided upon until, uh, the, the millage levy for general purposes, which is, uh, by July first of, of the year in which that millage would be collected. The resolution is, is organized so that there are, if created, there are blanks in the resolution that you would essentially insert here, the millage rate upon the time when that levy would be decided. Uh, so that's how that would work. Uh, so this resolution, uh, that, that Stephen did is, um, essentially, um, covering the, um, the boundary that we showed to you, uh, via, uh, presentation last time. Uh, that boundary is inclusive of, um, all, uh, CBD properties, um, on both the, uh, north side of two seventy eight, uh, and then the south side of two seventy eight, uh, to Carl's Corner. So, uh, I believe we still have that map. Marina, do you have that map?
Yep. It's the SSD map.
There it is, yep. Can you increase the size of that, please?
Yep.
As you can see on the screen, that is the proposed boundary of the special service district. Um, there, um, so if, if you determine that you would, um, like to move forward with the creation of such a district, uh, this resolution, uh, with the attached boundary map, uh, would be used to, to create it at the next regular meeting.
Uh. I have a question. Uh. Do you exclude residential properties?
Uh, no, um, we can't, we can't carve out holes.
Okay.
It has to be continuous.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
Two questions. So Patrick, um, when we establish this district, is that, is it established on into, you know, infinitum, whatever, however you want to say it, or is there sunset? Um, the date that we have to reestablish?
Well, much like the tad, what you do, it, it's, it's essentially, my understanding is that it is infinite, infinitum, but what, what we've proposed in the boundary of the language of the resolution is the anticipated generation of revenue over a certain period of time and what that revenue would be generally used for.
Okay.
So for example, um, if you see in that draft language in the, in the recitals, we, we try and define that.
So then that, it might be a good idea at some point in the future to do another resolution, just stating that.
Sure. Well, for example, um, you know, this, this, this leaves in filling the blanks for what we anticipate the revenue to be generating, the, the amount of revenue to be generating. But on an annual basis, the board would have, have the opportunity to change the levy in the district, uh, to meet the needs of the city at that time.
And there's no problem if we decided not to levy a millage rate one year for whatever reason or something. I mean, that doesn't make this go away.
No, you could, you could set the millage at zero.
You could do either.
Yeah. That's right. Oh, yeah, yeah, please. Oh, uh, in addition, uh, just to further this discussion, if, um, you know, the, during the discussion at the last work session, uh, it was raised by members of the public, um, to further research some possible alternate uh, revenue generating solutions.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, one specifically being a blight tax, um, which we had, you know, looked at before, but looked in more detail this time and, um, Stephen will explain to you why, um, the blight tax, uh, mechanism is not really prudent, uh, for the aim that we have here.
Thank you, Patrick. So, yes, in fact, Georgia does have a provision of law that's colloquially, colloquially known as a blight tax. What it, uh, is officially known as, uh, is a redevelopment tax incentive program. And that official language kind of speaks better to what it really does as well as why it is not a viable option for funding capital improvements. So, um, the, the Georgia law is actually in the Georgia constitution. And this was adopted about twenty years ago as an amendment to the constitution. It's in Article nine, section two, paragraph seven, sub-paragraph D, authorizes an increased millage rate for blighted property. And again, it's an incentive program to eliminate blight, not a revenue program. So one of the main questions is what's a blighted property, uh, to which such a tax could be applied? And the property must be, uh, quote, endangerment to public health or safety. So think of a dilapidated building. It's definitely not a vacant lot or an underutilized commercial property. And it's not a district situation that the board or the city manager declares. It's a case by case basis, parcel by parcel. And essentially, the city has to initiate an action in municipal court where the property owner has due process and an opportunity to disprove that their property is blighted. So we would have to come in and show how it endangers to the public health, uh, or safety. And, you know, so what goes into that? You'd have to pay the, um, our contract building official to inspect it, pay the city attorney to draw up a lawsuit, pay both those people to come to municipal court and prove the case. Then if we're successful, that single property, one at a time, would be added to the roster of blighted properties to which an additional millage would be applied, uh, each year as long as they're blighted. Again, it's an incentive program. So once a property is established to be blighted, it pays an extra tax. But, uh, the ordinance must establish a standard for which the property owner can prove that blight has been remediated on property. And that's the whole purpose of the program. So not only does the, if once that's, so, you know, typically that's done by demolishing the derelict building that made it a public safety problem in the first place. Once the owner proves that the blighted property, formerly blighted property is no longer blighted, not only does the additional millage come off, but we have to give them a discount on their property tax for a period of time as like a reward for getting rid of their blights.
Would blight, so would blight include properties with environmental issues?
It could. It, um, that could fall under the, um, detriment to public safety. Yeah, uh, I saw, I looked at various jurisdictions in Georgia that have these ordinances. And at least one of them, I can't remember who, had said, you know, they put it as a designated superfund site, which is a pretty high standard. I mean, for most environmental problems are only ascertained by digging into the ground. Um, the superfund means that it's like the worst of the worst. So, you know, where would that threshold be? I'm not sure. But that, that is one of the ways to define blight.
And, you know, we've, we've had, as the board knows, we've had discussions with, um, a, an eminent domain attorney regarding, um, you know, the, the, the potential for imminent domain as a response to economic development need. Um, that, uh, statute, uh, has a definition of blights uh, that is generally considered the definition of blight statewide and they kind of the gold standard. And Stephen and I, uh, believe that really, uh, we, we think we only have a singular property that we could take through this process, right? Um, so that being said, um, there are other tools at our disposal to deal with that property that we believe could be taken through this process. And we're about to initiate those. Um, but this could be a potential, um, avenue for us to explore down the road, uh, for properties such as the one that I'm talking about. Um, but until then, it, it's not a viable solution.
So, come, uh, so, I mean, is that, um, yeah.
So I think this is the blight part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all I had. So I had a question for you. That's pretty. Property by property, you got to prove that it's blighted. If they fix it, then it's no longer subject to them. And they get a discount. So.
And it's not appropriate for capital projects.
Right. It would be, it doesn't give you any certainty whatsoever.
Or does create revenue. This, it, it's a decision.
Yes.
Okay. So about the SSD itself, uh, S D S?
SSD, special services.
Wish to comment. Yeah, I do have some questions about that. Um, so, you, you know, I, I guess the fundamental question for me is, uh, you know, in creating this SSD and, uh, you know, increasing the village in that part of town, uh, what is, what is the goal specifically? You know, what are we raising?
Uh, capital projects within the boundary area.
We have specific capital programs.
Absolutely, and we, and we listed those in the.
So here's where I'm having trouble with this is I looked at the capital project uh, for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, we have, uh, a lot of ones there of things that are begun, uh, that are to be done. And every one of them has a funding source.
Mm-hmm.
We have, uh, an overage or however we want to term it, six hundred forty two thousand dollars in the capital fund.
Uh, that is the, 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 the amount of remaining funds that we anticipate having at the end of twenty five in the capital fund if we did all of those projects. However, I would like to point out to you that the current budgets anticipated a three mil levy in the SSD, so that's built in.
That's built into this capital.
Correct.
My question is this, and this is where I'm really having, uh, trouble with it. Uh, when I first, uh, when, you know, this was first brought up in the, uh, strategic planning meeting, it sounded like a good idea. Um, where I'm having, uh, trouble now is, uh, on two fronts, on a couple of fronts. Uh, on one, I don't know that this is the right time to be doing so. Um, I really think that, uh, you know, after talking to a couple of business owners, I didn't talk to all of them, but I talked to a few business owners. Um, I believe that this would be really, uh, putting an additional burden on them. It is, uh, doing that. And I'm not sure that that's warranted at this time. Why? Because we have all of these other projects that are going to get done. You know, I'm not sure that I see, uh, why we couldn't put this off, uh, for it until some of these wind down. A second, uh, the second part of this that worries me is that, uh, you know, staff is, uh, is strained as it is with the number of projects that we have. So is the impact of adding additional projects, uh, funded by what we would be raising the millage in the uh, SSD, is that going to require us to add additional, uh, manage, uh, additional profits?
No, all of those projects that were identified as being able to be funded by revenue generated in the SSD are already contained in the capital program. There's, there's no additional projects that would be inserted into the capital program.
Now, this was the same list of projects that we had launched there as well.
No, that, that is, so there are some projects that carry over from year to year in the program, uh, but the twenty four, twenty five program is different than the twenty three, twenty four programs. Is the twenty three, twenty four program contains projects that we've already.
That you have been.
That's correct. Yeah.
So let's tackle, well, let, let's talk about the, the first part of, uh, which is the greater part. Um, is the impact on small businesses. Uh, the reason that I'm concerned about that is because, uh, looking at, you know, uh, doing this, uh, to me, it says a couple of things. It says that, uh, one, you know, we may be, uh, inadvertently, I, I know that's not our hope, but we may be inadvertently pushing out smaller businesses, uh, making it, uh, you know, unpowerable or, you know, uh, uncomfortable for them to operate here. Uh, the second part of that is that if we do end up moving smaller businesses out, if the, if that is the impact of this, uh, the only businesses that, you know, will, will be somewhat larger and most likely, uh, you know, will start to have, uh, national chains and myself, you know, uh, my, uh, and in my, my vision where we're going with, uh, downtown development, uh, has always been that we would, uh, nurture, we would encourage uh, small businesses to be in town. So am I, am I incorrect in my understanding?
Well, I think, I think the question you need to ask yourself is, um, is the reward of generating enough revenue to do downtown capital projects to improve infrastructure in the district? Then therefore allowing the district to grow and be sustainable, uh, greater or less than the risk that an additional tax burden might drive a business out of the community? I mean, that's, that's the question. Right. And, and that, that's it in a nutshell. Now, to your point about chains, um, we can't prohibit that now. The only, the only place that we could prohibit that is on property that is controlled by either the city or DEA. So there's no, nothing stopping, you know, a chain from coming into our community now. Now, that being said.
You do have some zoning.
We have, we have zoning that, for example, makes it difficult for fast food restaurants with drive-throughs, traditional drive-throughs from local. Now that we can do.
What Lionel's saying, you know, is that if you raise the cost of doing business here, it pushes out small businesses and makes it.
That was liable for large corporations that can.
That's basically what that script that costs over a larger, whatever.
I can put back on that a little bit because I think the board has gone along by adopting the street bed, the street grid policy that we have if we're trying to implement in our downtown. And also, uh, by trying to improve the pedestrian natures of our downtown, so it becomes more walkable and more friendly towards small businesses as a result. And it does pay revenue to make those projects happen. We have, uh, disconnected streets at this point that we need revenue in order to make those connections, make it come together. So I think that there is, I, it, it is a balance and it really resonated with me when, uh, some of the business owners say, hey, you're looking at disrupting that in the coming year with, uh, the two seventy eight projects. And maybe, uh, the coming year is not the year to actually levy the revenue. But I'm perfectly on board with the idea of moving forward with adopting the district. And it'll be up to a future board to decide, um, what to levy.
My, uh, what's up the top of my mind is, uh, keeping the small businesses here. Uh, folks have invested their time, their money, their sweat to, uh, building something here. Uh, if this is, uh, you know, the only way that, um, you know, we can do what it is we want to do downtown, uh, what I have to say is that to me, it's the wrong time to be doing this. Uh, and second is that, uh, you know, I guess the, the question that, we'll see right then. Or someone, uh, put it as to the balance of, uh, is it worth it? Um, at this point in time, I, I don't know, I don't believe that the choose is worth, uh, the squeeze.
Someone put forward the idea of, instead of three, one, Bill, what, what would one mill create?
Well.
Create a third of two hundred seventy five.
That's right, okay.
I did remember the original ninety.
So I asked you. I mean. Yeah, and, and, and I want to caution y'all about discussing what the millage would be right now because that, that would be a future board's decision. Um, so I, you know, I want, I want everybody to try and focus on whether or not we move forward with the creation of the district itself.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So I think, I think there's a couple of things. I know you said a couple of things, um, you know, first on the, on the, on the capital budget. Just so that everyone knows, there's not a single solitary project we've done in eight years that is equal to whatever's in these contracts. Until we engineer it, until it's designed, it's typically double the cost and sometimes it's been triple the cost. These are just placeholder numbers of what we think it might be if it someday happens. And what we spend on capital projects is money that we have. Uh, so these funding forces, uh, funding sources are fungible. They change, you know, um, the time. So I, I know last year we had some residents have a lot of questions around the capital budget. I just wanted to make sure that, that folks understood that. Um, as, as far as, I, I don't think anybody wants to, to put any pressure on small business owners. It'd be great if they didn't have to pay any of it. Um, I think what you're going to find regardless of whether you do an SSD or not is it is going to get more expensive for them to be here anyway, because at some point in time, property values are going to continue to increase. They have, to a certain extent. I believe firmly that they have them in this, in the central business district at the same rate as they have on the residential side. And I understand for business owners that have leases, um, you know, with, that pay triple net leases that you're going to, you're responsible for those pass-throughs regardless of whether taxes are through property value appreciation and or an SSD. Um, I like the SSD better because, um, personally, I think it forces any money raised from it to go specifically back into the district for infrastructure projects that helps those businesses long-term um, versus having the ability to use it for general operating expenses that we, we need those too. Um, and so I think that is a benefit of it. I like the fact that it can be zero or three or five or ten or whatever, but it could be set specifically what needs to be for that year. And I think that board should be responsible for setting it based upon where they are at the midpoint of the year, the same way we've had to do every year when we set the millage rate uh, on, uh, for the tax digest, you know, and so I do like that piece of it. I think if we want to continue to move Avondale forward specifically with this development with the central business district, which is going to include commercial, but also hopefully a decent amount of residential, um, we need to have avenues to continue to invest in that area. We have a massive smaller infrastructure issue. We've got massive, we've, we've got streets that need to be bought. No, I haven't known any business owner currently in the central business district who we've approached about buying streets has given us a discount. In fact, we've even given us the chance to buy it, what it, what the prop, the assessed value is. Oh, it's typically eight to ten times more than that, you know? If we want to do that, if we want to take what was a red, a red line district for a long period of time to make it something that feels like a community that I think that our plan calls for, um, there's going to have to be additional revenues. There just, there just has to be.
No doubt. And, you know, everything you've, uh, you've explained there, you know, makes a, a compelling case for it. Um, I, I agree. Uh, I, I'm still not seeing that, uh, the risk of losing some of the folks who uh, help build the downtown bits, you know, it, it's, it's not, uh, that risk is not sitting well, isn't that clear enough?
Yeah, if I will, I'll real quick, can I reframe this issue a little bit just for the purposes of this discussion? So the downtown projects within the capital program have to be done. Um, otherwise we're, we're negligent and potentially causing damage to property. Um. The question for you guys then is, how do we pay? Because we gotta do the projects. So how do we pay for it? And the only ways we have an opportunity to pay for these things are threefold, right? We can increase the general millage and generate more revenue down. We can explore grants, grant opportunities and try and offset funding through, through those, which we do all. Or three, we can create a special service system. Those are pretty much our options. Um, you know, you could theoretically, you could, um, free up more money in the operating budget to flip toward that, right? The, the, the major expense in the operating budget is our bodies, right? Their salary positions are, are, are compensation matters. So you can, you can eliminate some positions. But if you eliminate positions and you run into the, the problem of having enough people to do the work that you want to do. So, so that's, that's just the, that's the scenario.
Well, I, I think. Lionel's just saying it's slow down, right?
That's basically it. Yeah, let's run some of this stuff down. Uh, this isn't the best time to be raising raising taxes.
Well, and just again, the, the budget, the budget currently as it's proposed today has a two hundred seventy five thousand proposed three mil on it. If we don't, then in the budget, again, it's not actual. But then there would be no money going to capital projects.
Well, we already have some money going.
No, not from, not from the next year, because we've got what, two hundred seventy four thousand on the front of the fund. I think it's two twenty eight now.
Two twenty.
So if we, if, if, let's just say, I'll, I'll give you all a thought experiment here. If, if the millage were levied at one mil instead of three, which would be the, you know, the two thirds reduction of the take, then I think, uh, Brittany and I ran those numbers, uh, and the, the budgeted transfer to capital is somewhere in the forty to forty five thousand dollar range. Um, the cap, the capital program, the, the dollars associated with the capital program assumes that this coming at the end of, at the end of twenty four, there will be a, I mean, yeah, at the end of twenty four, there would be a two hundred fifty thousand dollar transfer made from the capital fund. Uh, we believe if, if the three mil SSD were created and we had the normal amount of salary savings we do from transitions, we believe that we would be able to comfortably meet that number and transfer that amount, if not a little more into the capital fund and to fund those programs. But that, that's, that's where we're, we stand.
Yeah. And I would argue that if we're not putting ten percent of what we're collecting into. Yeah, and I would argue that if we're not putting ten percent of what we're collecting into. Capital fund transfers for future capital projects, we're falling behind.
And everything gets more expensive.
And everything gets more expensive.
Every year. So can I make?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, I really love our early businesses. I'm on the DDA and I enjoy that little loft. And I try to support them as much as possible from my own, with my own patronage. But, and this is going to sound a little cold and I don't mean it to be cold. But the fact of the matter is, not every business will survive forever. That doesn't happen in the caterer, it doesn't happen anywhere. Businesses come and go. And so as much as I love our businesses, I don't know that I in any way can guarantee. That somebody's going to be here forever. I mean, I, I tend to look at my role as with a wider view, more comprehensive view. In the fact that what we need is a resilient downtown. And a resilient downtown is one that handles stormwater. It has transportation infrastructure, it has parking infrastructure. Why do I say resilient? Because what we need is a place that can continue into the future. To keep attracting businesses as we move forward. Not every business is going to make it. But what we want is during economic ups and downs, we want a place where businesses want to be. You know, I really believe that all of these investments that we are making or in our capital plan. Will pay off in the years to come and that they will create a synergistic energy. And attract residents as well as new businesses that will feed off of each other. And create more opportunities, more foot traffic for even for the businesses that we have now. And it's not just me saying this, studies have shown over and over again, if you invest in infrastructure. It helps everyone. This is smart growth that we've all run on. I want to make a distinction between property owners and businesses, because what we're talking about here. And I know rents will go up, I'll get to that in a second. What we're talking about is a tax, a small tax on property. Existing property owners here will eventually realize a pretty substantial profit from their investment as our downtown improves. But what about people who run small businesses who also own property? Or the people who are running small businesses and have to pay possibly a somewhat increased lease? Well, being on the DDA does give me a little bit of insight into part of this that maybe some others don't have. So we've already, we've seen the list of physical projects on the capital plan, which I believe will benefit our businesses. But let me add a few more things that happen in Avenue. The DDA, our, our downtown development authority is also our Main Street. And this Main Street Board allows us to offer some goodies to incent businesses. But it also requires to be a Main Street Board, requires a lot of staff to, just to remain in good standing. With that every year to allow us to do those things. Some of the things that the DDA and Main Street Board can offer are low interest loans and facade grants. Rural and opportunities that zone tax credits. Free marketing and promotions to businesses, a quarterly business newsletter, events. You know, we just had a discussion in the DDA about adding not one, but two. Events in the spring in addition to what we already have on our schedule. One in person and one online to bring this into businesses. And we're all happy to do this, we want to do this for our businesses. The DDA is working on and sometimes funding parking solution. And trying very hard to keep parking free in Avondale versus other cities. And what about the DDA and the Main Street Boards themselves? Many cities have to fund these groups with an additional tax on their downtown earnings. We don't have to do it, it's free right now. So I just think, you know, all of these teams take a lot of time and money. And I think it's important for us all to realize that they primarily benefit from small indie businesses. Not the owners of big empty parcels or lighted properties. These are things that we are doing constructive, positive things that we're doing to help our small businesses. You know, I agree, I don't want to impose a tax that would be a hardship. I tend to agree with Dee, but I would like to, you know, maybe take a look at the two seventy-eight project. When we get to establishing the mileage and making sure we consider that. You know, but nothing is perfectly fair. And even while we're doing our best to get downtown properties properly evaluated, this is one way to ensure that those who are paying too little now. I'm not talking about small indie businesses, will contribute a bit more. I just, I really feel this is, this is the route to go. In terms of the needs that we have in our downtown. And the funds that we are already putting toward helping our small businesses.
Right, so, I mean, and what you said there makes sense. And in light of what you said there, maybe what we need to do is prioritize the infrastructure. Of projects that we have here. We have them listed as infrastructure, transportation, parks and green space, et cetera. From what you said, it sounds like infrastructure should have the priority. And, you know, that sort of, that makes sense to me, stormwater. Yeah, that definitely makes sense. Maybe we need to put a focus on that for the next, I don't know, however many years. And some of these things deprioritize them. And bring them on when it makes more sense. Right now, for me, I do have, you know, as everyone's heard, I do have concerns about the idea. Of doing this right now, I think it would make better sense. To let some of the things that we have went on, wind down. And then we'll probably be in a better economic environment. To decrease the impact to the small businesses. That's my view.
Well, as I say it tonight, you're only being asked to create two.
It's just whether to establish it or not, when the mileage rate decision comes later. So, alright, everybody good? I mean, we are not voting on this.
You think that? No, so I, except for the fact that. I'm, I'm assuming the board would want staff to bring this forward to a regular meeting.
Yes.
Patrick, it might be helpful to pull out some of those infrastructure projects though, that we are specifically looking. And go ahead and just have a list of those that we.
Yes, and I, I do believe we've got that on the website with the projects associated in the presentation that we gave. Yeah.
Alright, next item of discussion of the work session, occupational tax will be the discussion, Mr. Manager.
Yes, so, yes. The, the occupational tax process. That the city has used for a long time, no longer works for us or our businesses. The reason being is that the formula that is assigned to. A business in order to calculate what their occupational tax owed per year is. Is too complex. And it's too complex because the, the city had previously adopted using SIC codes. S I C, codes to determine the category upon which a business falls. And there are dozens and dozens of SIC codes applied to types or categories of businesses throughout the city. A lot of businesses don't know which SIC code they actually fall under. Because they're, they're oddly vague and specific at the same time. So, we are proposing simplifying the process and making it easier to apply for. And calculate your occupational tax due every year. By changing the formula association to those SIC codes to. That's right, NACs codes, which are fewer in, in category. And so by doing that, it just makes the process go far more smoothly. It will expedite the process, especially as we move it online. It will, you know, take less time for the businesses themselves to go through the process. And take less time for us to process those, those payments. Because if the board recalls, the occupational tax is due on an annual basis. And that, once that tax is paid, then the city issues the business license for the coming year. So, that's all, that's all this is. However, it's, the, the previous formulas are in an ordinance. So we have to amend the ordinance in order to change the formula to then, from SIC to NACs. So, in order for that to be applicable in twenty twenty-four. And of course, we, we go through the business license process in the first quarter of the year. Then we need to amend that ordinance during the calendar year twenty twenty-three. So we're trying to get that process started right now, so that on December the twentieth, that will come back to the board for consideration.
Are the proposed rates the same as what they were before?
Well, they, they, since there were dozens and dozens of rates last time, so, you know, associated specifically with a SIC code. We, what we've done is during that consolidation period. Also consolidated the various rates associated with those old SIC codes into the NACs code. So most of them are very, very, very similar. But there's going to be slight adjustments to some categories just based on consolidation. But this won't, none of the formulas will change in a manner to materially impact anybody's occupational tax due.
These definitions are a lot better.
Yeah.
And is there. I mean, it's really the responsibility of the business to define itself.
Yes. The business defines itself.
So if I start a mighty company, are you going to be suspicious?
Well, I mean, it, we, we can always verify or audit any specific business. We might be committing fraud, but hopefully it won't come to that.
So is there a, is there a process that a business owner could go through if it is material to. Contest the increase because of the change from S I C to N A, N A S E S?
We haven't contemplated that because we don't think that there is a chance. Well, I, I mean, the question then becomes, has that business been incorrectly classified? For a long time and been paying too much or too little? I, you know, it, it, it's tough to legislate that. Well, I, I mean, I just, I don't think we need to legislate it. I think we can, I think we can, we can handle that as a staff. Again, this is not, we are not trying to, to make anything more complicated, we're trying to simplify here. No, not at all. No, this is literally just for convenience of the process.
Part of our ongoing attempt to clean things up and make it more.
Efficient.
Yes. So, so what is next on that? We would adopt that or vote on it?
So, so, so we will bring an, an ordinance to the board and go through multiple readings. Unless the board consented to unanimously consider at the next meeting, so just the normal ordinance process.
But we gotta do it in twenty-two weeks.
Yes, if we want the new process to apply in twenty twenty-four. We have two more meetings.
Okay, so we do the first reading, the thirteenth, the second, twentieth, if it's required.
That's, that's right.
Everybody came to that.
Yeah, so. It, it might make, it might make a little bit more sense to folks to put a whole trade in context. Meaning how would a business person calculate their taxes?
Yeah, so that's all, that'll all be in the ordinance language, which it currently is, we, you know, we just have. The way to calculate is in the ordinance. And within, we also put that in a letter to businesses every year. So that won't change, the only thing that changes is literally the category. Yeah.
Alright, I'll get on that one. Again, there'll be two readings on that. First reading, next meeting, second reading, we'll vote on it. Alright, discussion of board appointments.
Yes, so, as we are wanting to do on an annual basis, we need to figure out. Or you guys need to figure out how you want to handle potential board appointments. We will have two meetings left this year. In which to do that unless y'all schedule a special called meeting for any other purpose. Keep in mind, although we aim to have all appointments made by the end of the year. So that terms begin in January, it is not necessary. Terms will roll over until addressed. Now, I'm sure y'all would like to get this done as soon as humanly possible. So, my proposal to you guys would be, if you want. To do interviews during the work session on the thirteenth and make appointments at the regular twenty. Unless y'all feel like you want to break out the interviews in a separate meeting.
Is this for the Green Space Ad Hoc Committee?
This is for every single board. Well. That, I, I don't know that answer yet. I think, I, I will provide you with that information via email. But we do have, you know, positions on the DDA. We have a vacancy to fill on the P Z A B. We, I think we have some, some resignation on the HPC. We will have, you know, the Green Space Advisory Committee. And then I believe, I believe we have one spot on the ethics.
Oh, wow, and we have applications.
Oh, yes, and y'all should have all of those. We've been disseminating them as the game.
To the open positions, who the incumbents were. It's very helpful. As well as attention.
Yeah, because I don't.
Resumes.
I don't think we've gotten any resumes.
We just approved the Green Space Ad Hoc, so I don't know if we've even, have we?
Just up there so that, yeah, I think if it goes in the next year, Dee and I will be fine with that.
Alright, we. Yes, if we could get, that would be helpful and maybe speed things up a little bit, but, okay. Everybody okay with that game plan? Okay, sorry. You think that?
No.
Okay, alright, last item of the public comment. Sorry, yes, Jan.
I'm grateful to Commissioner Shor-Tel for providing more context for the way that the city has invested already. Small businesses. I'm also aware of it since twenty twenty-two, property taxes for residents revenue has gone up by a million dollars. And I think that some of that money has gone towards investment in the business area. Our staff has certainly, that we pay as a business in the business area. I love the businesses, I'm glad they're there. So it's not about that, but I do think that it's good to go. Fax it with the past and a subsequent investment by the city.
Yes, Stacia.
So Stacia, owner of the lost building on twenty-eight sixty-six Washington Street. I don't think anybody would contest that infrastructure needs to be built. Speaking for myself, and I think several other business owners. I wish that there was a more fair way of looking at this. Because when we think of the acreage within Avondale State, and I pulled up the map on Google. Roughly two thirds of the city is residential. And what we're saying is we're going to target just a third of the acreage. And ask them to pay even more than what everybody else. Which, just on, on the face of it, seems unfair to me. Because we all rise and fall soon together. Which, just on, on the face of it, seems unfair to me, because we all rise and fall soon together. Right, so maybe some residents don't ever come into the downtown and that's their prerogative. But with a vibrant downtown, they also prosper because their promise also.
Absolutely.
So, I, it doesn't seem like there's been real consideration of what about just a half mill across the board to Ollie? Or a mill increase across the board? Where I'm, I imagine you would raise more than two hundred and seventy-five thousand if you're targeting. And it would seem more equitable, and it can also help those businesses who are just trying to stay alive to not have to be overly burdened with a, a significant increase of the millage rate for those persons. I know one of my parcels was shown last time, oh, it's just eighteen hundred dollar condition according to the year. That's a lot of money to use. That's not a consequence. So I really, I know you're saying, oh, we're just gonna create the district now, the decision will be needed later. But that's not really what's meant. I mean, I'm pretty sure we can all agree, because he's already put in in their mind, a three-mill increase for the, the capital budget. You see the goal on the wall, and I'm asking this once again, let's be more ethical about this.
Okay, thank you. Nick?
Nick Curry, uh, out of Heaven, on, uh, David's Creek. Um, also forty-two Clarendon in the neighborhood, so I come in from both sides. Um, I completely agree with Stacia on this. Um, the reason is, I think it's pretty simple. I don't understand all the tax stuff and how everything works, but the downtown is an amenity that's, that's benefits the whole community. I think if this was something about the lake and you were asking business owners to help out with that, then, then property owners in the business district, then that might be unfair. But in the case here of Stacia's request to consider something for the whole city, and I as a property owner of a neighborhood would be affected by that, that seems right to me, because the business district is an amenity for the whole community, whole neighborhood. And so why wouldn't those important infrastructure do this be something that we will all share? So, I think that's, I think that's a very reasonable approach. I think in most cases, we all, at least we've talked about it, a couple reasons, where any of the businesses are not flush in much more often down on Avondale. And I think it put a lot less sweat in tears to a lot of the great women in the city, as you guys have done a terrible job on helping bring about the deals, some of the side of what was going on. But I think the smaller businesses actually could feel this in the pockets of some meaningful way. Um, have, have been the years in getting ahead and making this happen. So, this feels a little immediate. Why would we, why would we do this particular thing? So, by the way, terms have updated much earlier. You think you get, it kind of looks like it needs to be, but if half mill across the whole neighborhood is four hundred, um, to Brian's point, you're gonna need it.
As long as, I think a mill is three hundred and thirty thousand.
Um, well, we go through that every June. It, yeah, it'll be four hundred thousand now.
Yeah. And so half would be two. But, good points. Yes, thank you. Marge?
Marge Mees, uh, Little Tree Arts Studios in the Central Business District, and I also am a resident in the Central Business District. So, I'm just curious why, you know, they, like residential, um, areas did not be part now. By definition, I say, you know, property versus residential. Because, you know, I, I live here too, so now I'm not only gonna realize an additional tax burden for my business, but also
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, I don't know how to, so yeah.
Philosophically, the answer to that question is the infrastructure benefits proper, it's not about businesses. It's about properties in an area. So the infrastructure that would be funded through any potential revenue generation within that boundary, it doesn't matter i- if it's commercial or personal. That, that's not the distinction. The distinction is the area, not the type of property. Different. That makes sense.
Well, you know that any of that additional revenue has to be spent in the district, so. Uh, yeah, go ahead.
It's sort of the heels of what Nick said, you know, we've owned our building at Little Tree since nineteen ninety-eight, paying taxes. Last year, our tax burden has went from twenty-five thousand dollars to almost sixty thousand dollars. Now we're talking about an, an additional mill on top of that, so I don't know what the math is, but it's more. Um, but I can guarantee you since nineteen ninety-eight, our tax dollars, uh, they've, they've gone to funds up over the residential side, so we've shared that for many questions.
Okay. Uh, well, it's, I should have yours. You on live?
Yes.
Okay.
John, you're on.
Hey, good evening. You know, I, after listening to a handful of these comments, I, I think, um, I think one thing sort of resonates. I think it's timing. You know, I, I like the notion that downtown pays for its own additional expenses, you know, in additional infrastructure, additional costs, additional additional expenses to cover the, the operation of a downtown district makes sense. SSD does that. I think there's no, no, no arguing that. But the timing of it just seems weird. And the problem that I'm seeing is that the, the SSD penalizes exactly those who've done who've done what we're asking for, done what we're striving to achieve, and that's invest in downtown. Um, you know, they've improved the properties, they've invested in the businesses, which attracts people to come and enjoy Avondale States. But that improvement, that property value increase is the hardest hit by millage increase. So, you know, you, you, unfortunate side effect of all that is that it double dips on those that are already committing to help grow and improve, so. You know, uh, there's gotta be additional ways to, to find that money for the initial investment, for the initial infrastructure costs. You know, the ongoing, sure, bring that in as a SSD situation. Um, but, uh, tax credits, grants, one-time versus ongoing expenses. I think there's more to be investigated here. I don't think we're, I don't think we're all, all the way settled here.
Thank you. And, um, you could really do that. Okay. Alright, thank you, John. Alright, any other comments? But we'll see, you got it? Thank you all for being here to see me. Appreciate it.